Good morning, everyone. I want to welcome you all to this Las Angeles County Board of County Commissioners. Today is the regular meeting, Tuesday, November eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. It is nine a.m. I'm going to call this meeting "Order." And I want to ask all of us to rise for an invocation by Commissioner Tony Haas, followed by the pledge of allegiance by Commissioner Lucero.
Governor Flanagan, thank you for listening. Please prepare us for the coming week. Take away our worries and our regrets. Go before us and clear the way. Protect us from evil and harm. Bring the right people into our lives. In always your holy name and your glory. Amen.
I do a certification certified by the United States of America. Intuitive, open, which stands one issue underground, invisible with the range just around. Thank you, Commissioners. I roll call Mr. Longcap.
Commissioner Sarah?
Yes.
Commissioner Haas?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez?
Here. Approval of the agenda. Do we have any changes to the agenda, Mr. Longcap?
Commissioner Haas, the board should remove item nine G. The board so desires. Nine E, nine G is the resolution for P.G. Fishers in nine E is consideration of Washington State Wildlife Commissioner. You have the board's chooses on.
Thank you, sir. Commissioners, there was a recommendation from Administrator Longcap. If you agree with those recommended changes, I will entertain a motion. I move to remove item nine G and item number nine E. On the agenda?
Second motion.
Commissioner Haas?
Yes.
Commissioner Sarah?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes, thank you. I'm going to go to section two, consideration of minutes. Thank you for putting this. The approval of regular meeting minutes on November fourth, two thousand and twenty-five. Any additions, deviations, or comments, Commissioners? Here it not, I will not take a motion.
We do approve the regular meeting minutes on November fourth, two thousand and twenty-five.
Second then?
Commissioner Sarah?
Yes.
Commissioner Haas?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez? Yes. On the next section, we have a reading of correspondence. Commissioner Lucero, would you like to go first?
Sure. On November eighth, I attended the Southside Irrigation Dish Company Annual Meeting. The main topic on there was kind of to establish the cost per assessment shares for this next year, which they improved to fifty-five dollars. And the expenses for the year two thousand and twenty-five were fourteen thousand, eight hundred and sixty-five dollars and seventy-four cents. And on November the eleventh, I along with my fellow Commissioners were prepared to look at, attend the Veterans Day Luncheon at Sebastián Jim. And it was an extremely good turnout. It was an honor to see all the veterans, local veterans that we have in the city, in the county. And also like to recognize Mrs. Linda Baron. She's been with this program, she's put it on for about twenty-six years. She's done an extremely good job with it. That's pretty much all my reports.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Haas?
On November the third, I attended Unified Wolf Coalition Director Jeff Davis. Introduced a petition to be introduced to Wildlife Commission meeting in Sterling. And they're not going to, at that time, they weren't going to entertain wolf issue. And it was disheartening to hear that because the Copper Creek pack has moved from Grand B area and is now in the Minnesota. And we have multiple depredations up there around Bickin County. And it's really turned into a mess up there. On the fifth of November, I attended Colorado Outdoor Partnership meeting. Parks Fernandez, Department of Defense Director of the DNR, Dan Gibbs were present. They gave an update. Mr. Gibbs gave an update. A hundred and one thousand dollars is spent on the co-op in two years. They're looking for an additional forty-one million more. And some of the items that they talked about were Beaver Management Program. They should have a draft down here within a week. And Natural Heritage Program. Mr. Gibbs stated that they have three thousand employees at DNR, three hundred of them are federal employees. And many of them were paid by federal grants during the shutdown. They've suffered. So last year, they had nineteen and a half million important visitors throughout Colorado. And he wants to hire even more front range rangers to help with their program. And then they gave an update on Colorado Outdoor Strategies. They've had thirty-three action items and plans that have been devised with visits to the travel nations, road shows, and resources of tourney events. And then there was an RPI update from all the regional partnerships. The GOCO funded fifty million, fifty percent of that would be for recreation outcomes and fifty percent of it for conservation. Then on the sixth of November, I attended a meeting with Daphne Gervais at DNR. She was one of the deputy directors. She wanted to update me on a bill that would be coming to Colorado counties for consideration. It's an outdoor recreation bill. There's no mandates, it's totally voluntary. And from the bill that we denied last year to CCI, they went in and pulled the questionable items out of there that we didn't like. And that was the river recreation portion, so it went right your way because there's going to be a bill that's going to come out that's going to address that. They took out the trails section and over and over throughout the bill, they emphasized the importance of that and how they want to work with that. It's about time. They have a three-part bill trying to go to give CPW more staff. CPW's role in outdoor recreation, they're going to take a larger role in that program. But it's going to leave local control alone for the sale. On the sixth of November, I attended the Environmental Impact Assistance Fund Committee. I sit on that board. And the governor's proposing a new scoring guidelines with a new tier-three category. So we've always had a tier-one and a tier-two category. Now there's going to be a tier-three. Save a lot of money, but now there's going to be three ways to get into it. So it's going to reduce the allocation to the other two tiers. And primarily, tier-three is going to be for larger regional projects, a new scoring criteria with proposed addition of the Strategic Growth Compliance Scoring, which is going to take into account if your county or municipality is growing and you'll be more able to qualify for this grant. And it's twenty percent of the total application. So there's another piece of buy that's going to be split out, same bucket of money. We have a meeting today to vote on whether we want to move forward with this new criteria. And we'll see how that turns out. We had a meeting on November seventh with CCI. And this meeting was more of an educational type meeting. The meetings were to foster feedback with external stakeholders on deep policy guidance. So individuals that were bringing policy forward, they could ask for our guidance. And if it's going to work, do you think this is going to work? Or if not, what can we do better in this bill? So that was a really good meeting. So these weekly Unified Wolf Coalition Meetings, they happen every week. I attended the next one on the ninth of November. The series of depredations in Eagle County continue to soar. The Range Rider Program, to talk to the landowners in the area, the Range Rider Program is ineffective. They act with basically what they're able to do is they can't haze that wolf any further than private property might. And so they wait right there until the dark of night and they come in and they do their thing. The next day, the Range Rider sees birds and notifies the rancher and CPW that we have a deprivation. On the tenth, we had our quarterly executive meeting to determine the staff benefits that they derive at the Department of Human Services. And like Commissioner Lucero said, what a great event. We attended the Veterans Day event there at Sebastián Jim. And honoring all of our local heroes and the ones that are survival and the ones that aren't. And we need to do that every day, not just that. On the thirteenth and fourteenth, I attended Wildlife Commission hearing that they held in Sterling. And I alluded to the fact that they didn't have the wolf issue on the agenda. But there was a public comment period. So representing Las Angeles County and Action Colorado, I'm Vice Chair of Action Colorado and Vice Chair of Colorado Counties Incorporated. I decided that ever attend and represent the Southern District, that's the district that elected me in this position. And I put my two cents in there and kind of during the public comment, and there were twelve other individuals that followed suit. And we were able to put the wolf issue back on the agenda just through public comment. But big white sheep lungworm disease was talked about, how they're going to mitigate that, do the vaccination program. Human varicose conflicts are up. There were five thousand master human varicose conflicts. The other thing we talked about was Buffalo receiving dual recognition, both livestock and wildlife now. This means privately owned bison will be managed as livestock. And on January first, two thousand and twenty-six, wild bison will receive legal protections. And primarily, this was to address the book live bison herd that travels back and forth across the state line up there in the northwest corner, from Utah back and forth. There are other property when they're in Utah, when they cross the line, they're private property. And as of right now, the property owners are taking care of the problem and fixing all the fence and that sort of thing. And knowing that Buffalo are a natural carrier of brucellosis, they are a titer. And Colorado is a brucellosis-free state. One of my questions to the director was, who's going to do that vaccination program? And I hope you have supplied corrals made out of four-inch pipe that are in the ground about six, eight foot because they tear things up. However, the primary reason that I attended was to testify in front of the Wildlife Commission about the inadequacies of the wolf reintroduction program. And ask for applause in Proposition 114 until the inadequacies can be resolved. And then on the river fifteenth, I had the honor to serve on the nomination panel for the Service Academy Awards. And I got to interview ten individuals. And what an honor it is to sit there and listen to these young men and women and their love of country and morals and values that they instill. Makes a guy feel good knowing that they're going to be believers in this country. So... Then on the seventeenth yesterday, we had our civilian response course right here in the chamber. And Mr. Wilson from Primero Security, he's the reserve officer there at Primero's school. He did the presentation. And he talked about the risk factors involved and the three statements to disaster response. And we made up makeshift program. We would address it here in the chambers itself. And that's my report, sir.
Thank you, Commissioners. I really appreciate that. Want to simply, as Commissioner Tony Haas was bringing an update on the wolf, there has been a public statement out of the state of Washington that they will no longer be exporting wolves to the state of Colorado because their herd is actually thinning out too much. And certainly, it's becoming extinct on their state. So Colorado right now, in the perspective of a proposition that the board has approved, is going to have to seek wolves elsewhere, which, you know, the stance from county commissioners, let the cycle go through the process naturally. I believe that right now, there has been the multiplication by them breeding already. And so, and they're moving from one county to the other. You cannot just simply say you're going to stay in Park County, Eagle County. As Commissioner Haas mentioned, they can move down all the way to Danniston. So from that perspective, I keep your eyes on what's going to happen at the national level. But I believe that for now, they're going to have to search and seek wolves elsewhere. On the thirteenth, a lot of the meetings, once again, the Veterans Day Luncheon. What an amazing opportunity to really go and say thank you to a veteran for, you know, remembering that faithful day on the eleventh month, on the eleventh day, on the eleventh hour of nineteen eighteen, when this whole thing became kind of a national reconnaissance for all of us understand the sacrifice of our heroes, which that's what they are. So great, great opportunity to work with them. A couple of items I want to highlight underfunded. We had an opportunity on the thirteenth, Administrator Longcap and the third judicial from the court system to present under the underfunded courthouse grant presentation. What an honor to be able to be there and request once again funds for a project that is going on on the third floor. We have, as we continue to stabilize and finish the, this is going to be probably the third phase, Mr. Longcap, fourth phase of a project that began some seven, eight years ago. And so now it's catching all the cracks, putting all the flooring and painting the third floor. So the presentation was made to them and certainly right now, everyone is feeling the pinch of less dollars to appropriate. So we will be looking at working with the underfunded courthouse board commission to get whatever we need to do. They have, and I want to give them a huge shout out. They have contributed to this courthouse over two million dollars over the project, the project's life. So I really, really, we express gratitude for being partnership collaborators in maintaining and beautifying this building that is now over a hundred years old. The, one of the, and also another shout out to Kim Gonzalez from the Public Health Department. Last week, she put a, there was a presenter from the Dallas Fort Worth area addressing on all Las Angeles County school districts, the dangers of vaping, tobacco and marijuana awareness, what teens need to know. I attended the evening for parents only. So he said a lot of the information that he presented to the parents was different than the information that he was presenting at the school level. And so what, with vaping on the rise, many teens are using nicotine, THC, marijuana, or both, often without understanding the real risk. A major issue of misinformation is many students believe vaping is harmless. But where, where are they getting these messages? That was kind of like his whole message. And how can we expose the tactics used to mislead them, empowering them to make healthier choices? One of the most impactful statements that he made, the presenter made at night is that this is so addictive. In a five day, someone can get addicted to vaping, five days, that's how, how ill it takes them. So the campaign from Public Health is going to keep on going. But this was an information that the community needs to know. One of the points that he addressed, that as more states legalize recreational marijuana, many teens assume that vaping it has no risks. Well, and he, on the presentation, he had various hiding mechanisms or tools for teens actually to keep their rapes. You wouldn't know, they keep it inside a marker. I mean, there are so many things that the market is actually selling. So the misconception about the effects of leading young people to make choices without all the facts. The presentation, of course, was eye raising. And for parents that were in the audience at night, I think now they can go back and begin to look, is my son or daughter actually vaping? And what exactly are the challenges when it comes to that? And so for all of that, incredible information for anyone out there that gets an opportunity to see this online, if you have any questions on that, please reach out to Kim Gonzalez at the Health Department. And they have information to begin to do the detox if so much needed. One of the points I want to just highlight on the November seventh, CCI meeting that we had, getting down deep in the weeds when it comes to a policy and legislative proposals. It is very important that counties are totally understand if there's going to be legislation that is going to be introduced and supported or opposed by all sixty-four counties that we, we all sixty-four come and understand exactly what is the proponent telling us? What is that going to do? But more than anything else, is that going to be impacting my county? Because at this point in time, our counties have been impacted so much through the unfunded or underfunded mandates and through legislation. We can no longer afford to do that. So we're telling, we're telling the state of Colorado, if you want to pass it, then fund it. You want us to comply, then fund it. So that's kind of the message of the whole thing. And I simply want to, as Commissioner Haas will be the chair of Colorado Counties in two thousand and twenty-six, it's going to give us an opportunity to have that liaison directly to, he'll be connected with the governor's office more so at that point, moment in time because of what is happening there. So that's going to be my update. And thank you so much to all of you for indulging us. So now I'm going to go to the elected officials, athletes. Do we have anyone from the assessors' office? Clerk and recorder's office? Sheriff's office? District Attorney? And order. Here it not, we're going to go now to presentations. It is always one of those times in our agenda that we look forward to hearing from what's happening this morning. I welcome John Saunders. Mr. Saunders, good morning. Amigado Seco, we welcome you and looking forward to conversation and updates.
Well, good morning. Appreciate your opportunity to be here and your willingness to hear this. Would like to give a little bit of update, what's going on in the broadband world. It's been a while since I've been down here and talked about that. So just to bring everybody up to speed and it's kind of a refresher, there are two different grant sources right now funding broadband in the state. They're nationally funded. One is called the CPF Program. That's funded by, was funded by Treasury. That one is well in progress right now. The other one is upcoming. It's called BEED. That comes out of, the funding is coming out of NTIA. Those still have not been fully released yet. So there is one grant that we are currently working on. Seco was working on on Highway twelve. It's part of the CPF Program. We're probably fifteen percent through without, into that one. That fifteen percent is, it's not much statistically, but time-wise, it's the work that takes the most. We've done all the pole engineering, working with San Isidro Electric on that. They're a great partner in all of this. They work really well with us, we appreciate them. And that's been completed and the decision's been made. So the poles are, they're doing what's called make ready work. So if there's poles, if there's a height clearance or something issue that we can't put the fiber on because it would create a height issue, they're fixing all of those right now, doing what's called a make ready work. Once that's done, it will move fairly quickly. We have the materials on hand and we're ready to go. As soon as they complete the make ready work, they can start hooking up, running the lines down there and getting everything completed. So again, these will have to be completed by the end of next year. So there's no extensions on this. They have to be completed by December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-six. We do have a few others that we're working on. We've got one in N County that goes a little bit into Otero County. There's one that covers quite a bit of Crowley County. And there's some on the, in the Avondale, Bublo area of Bublo County. We'll work on that one, Highway twelve up here. So that's the CPF grants that are in progress. The BEED grants, they, long story short, with the new administration, they came back and said, we want to see a different way to handle this. We want to take some of the encumbrances that were in there out of, from the previous administration. And so they did another round of, basically everything had been approved already and the contracts not signed. And said, we're doing what's called a benefit of the margin round. And everybody needs to reapply. And anybody that hasn't applied can also apply. So we did that, we applied for those. It was a fairly short window. We did that, we did get a number that had been preliminarily awarded to Seco. One is in Copeal, so we will fiber to the town of Copeal. Half of Aguilar, Seco on its own funding built out about half of Aguilar, did half of the town. This will fund the other half of the town then, so it'll be complete. Those are the ones that impact Las Angeles County. We also got one to do, you know, the town of Walsh, the town of Vilas over in Vacca County. Then Grenada and Wiley in Prowers County. And then there's one that's going to be a fixed wireless rather than fiber. It'll cover a lot of Highway fifty in Otero County and some up into Bublo County there. Basically from Rocky Ford up to about Bum in that area. So that's what we've got going on there. With that, any questions about any of the grants who have progressed or anything?
Sure. John, you've been also attending some of the meetings that you were speaking of with the Colorado Broadband Project. I am really looking forward to looking at the map at the end of two thousand and twenty-six with all of the projects that are going on here in Southern Colorado. The, if you were to right now make a prediction, all the ones that you mentioned, and they will be completed by the end of two thousand and twenty-six, is what then is going to be the next step there are?
So really, the next step is, are these BEED grants that, the NTIA is committed to have those approved by, I think it's December third or fourth of this year. After that, it has to go to a sister organization under Commerce. It's called NIST. They will do a final approval and I think it's for the funding mechanism piece of it rather than logistics. But we just discovered that there's a next wave that has to happen through NIST. Once that's in, we'll be starting those. And those are going to cover most of those areas. Under the BEED, what the final ruling on all of that, if you can, if they're not getting fiber or a fixed wireless solution, there will be a satellite solution for those people that they will be funding to help get the satellite service in there. Amazon, I don't know if you're aware, they're actually coming out with a satellite service. They've started, I believe, launching some of their satellites already. They're in really early phases. But they won the biggest portion on this round of BEED for the satellite in Colorado. They beat out Starling significantly. So the people that do, and that's a good solution. All three of those options for service are, each has their place. Fiber is great, we've got concentrations of people. When there's a lower concentration, that fixed wireless works well. We have some technology, we can easily get people a hundred meg. The ones where, some of the people were doing with that, they were early testing, we're getting three hundred meg through and through. So again, it will carry the needs for several years. And then for those people who are out there in very remote areas, it's just not cost effective to build them. Satellite makes a great option too then.
What's the price comparison between, you know, your satellite, versus the hard one?
You know, all three of those, the monthly pricing is from a market competitive standpoint, they're all running about the same somewhere between fifty and a hundred dollars. That's, you know, the averages I've seen, you know, in Colorado as well as is the bigger populace. So anywhere in those ranges, depending on the size of package you want, starting at like a hundred, hundred and twenty five megs, going on up to, you know, a gigabit. The gigabit packages that Secom sells on fiber, they're they're way under a hundred dollars. And what's nice about these grants, they will fund, even if the person does not want to connect to Secom right at that point, we can go install the fiber right to their house, put a box on their house. And it's ready to go. The grant will fund that. And the last statistic I have on this, it increases the property value by about three percent. I think that number's probably actually gone up some. That number is from like two thousand, two thousand, twenty twenty, twenty twenty one, somewhere in that range. I don't know that they've, the group I get that from hasn't done one in a few years here. My personal opinion is I bet it's increased the value even more just because of all of the work from home that people are doing now and the other demands of things. So it raises property value.
So John, how we started conference in Philadelphia where the Amazon marketing director made a presentation and I heard a visit with her after the presentation asking her about Will America? And and then, of course, it's going to be about numbers. Numbers are going to drive the market. And so we exchanged cards, have a couple of emails, exchanged the middle in there and then see what what's happening because if they don't have the numbers in southeast Colorado or just in the outline areas, I still wanted to consider the option in partnering with some of the brands, you would be there, a partner to them to provide and or deliver those services. Again, I don't know exactly where their campaign is at that time. She mentioned that California was huge and big populated states.
Yes. Colorado, again, I don't remember the numbers. It's probably a ten to one or more that Amazon got those awards over Starlink in Colorado. So again, they probably don't have near the numbers like in California or somewhere. But again, they got a big one. In the bottom line, it doesn't matter what technology you're using, whether it's a fixed wireless, a cell phone, a satellite, all of it at some point has to come back to fiber. It it all ultimately hits fiber and goes to the next location of wherever. So I can I can say within our nondisclosure, we have talked to a number of different companies about things like that. Again, they have to have backlogs from a satellite perspective. It has to go from the ground from some station up to the satellite and that has to have that. So it has to get back all. And the more satellites that get put up there and the more people, they need to keep that as local as they can. So again, there's opportunity for a Secom to to sell to to the satellite companies.
You mentioned that the there was a CPF grant funded by the Treasury Department. Did they have that united budget for twenty twenty six?
Yes, it it's it's fully funded, I think, when they did that back several years ago. This was part of the some of the Biden era stimulus money. I don't remember specifically which that came from, but I think each of the counties got some money from that as well. For for capital project, you can use it for infrastructure and other things like that. I think this came from that same funding source.
And this is why I'm asking that question because twenty twenty six is the last day to report and I think it has a deadline of
On the ARPA funds?
Yeah, December thirty first.
Yes.
Yeah, pretty alligator.
Yeah.
Okay, so they're in cover or actually we have a contract and you'll get to spend some of the dollars on behalf of Colorado.
Yes, we will. So we'll get those. That's the ones for Highway twelve that we're working on that are part of that. We did look, they had some leftover money, the state did. They had a really short window. They came out back and said, we've got a little bit of funding. We'd like to get it out there if we can. About eight hundred thousand dollars. So that's why we had approached the commissioners. We had looked at possibly doing Starkville. So we did the engineering, we did everything. And we were also, after we got the engineering done, we reached out to Mr. Doran Camp about asking for a letter of support. Literally a couple of days before the grant was due in early November, we got back from our vendors that we wouldn't be able to get the materials on time. That grant had to be finalized, done by September thirty this year. And a lot of the materials were getting like a forty week lead time, of which it there was just, you know, physical way that we could complete that unfortunately. Again, that was on our radar. We're interested in moving to Starkville area. There may be other funding sources come up. The state may have some programs going forward too. That's kind of up in the air. They may have some middle miles which that can play into it. The state, there's a lot of changes going on. The PUCs actually set the sunset and they just issued the report, the legislature did, or the entity that did the the sunset report. That was in October. I have not looked at that yet, but I've heard that the US Bay Area will continue the PUC. But they actually have some funding mechanisms in there that can there are mechanisms that that can provide grants to put out. There's a couple of mechanisms in there.
Commissioner Tony Haslam made a comment that the Department of Local Affairs is adding a new qualification for applicants of those funds. And I hope, right on stage, I hope that that's not get approved because otherwise, you know, it's going to be based on growth rather than access for Coloradans. That would, I don't know, I think it would be all at the agency that those funds would be coming from.
Yes, and those would typically then go to a government entity that would actually fully distribute the funds to get out there. Those, a good source for those that pay do have some middle mile, and it's a high interest to Secom. We would still like to build from Kim into Trinidad and pick up Branson. One, those people of Branson, it would be a huge boost to them. Two, it improves the reliability for Trinidad as well as Kim, Pritchett, Springfield, you know, it adds another route of path. If there was some kind of a failure, the traffic can reroute in the other direction.
Interesting. And last, I have you been working, I know you have, with San Isidro Electric. I attended a presentation a while back with the Fire Chiefs Association of the San Isidro County. And one of the points that was emphasized through San Isidro and Excel, there was a partnership of them two utilizing some of the towers and some of the fiber that is add to there to actually put this what do they call a smoke detector in the event of a fire. You will put this detector at the height of whatever allowed by the tower owner to see if in fact it's real smoke and then in real time provide information back. So I'm glad the two Secom and San Isidro have any opportunity to partner there because as the drought continues to lead up this part of the state, if we can detect whether it's fire or otherwise, promptly the response to the teams is going to be that much efficient.
Absolutely. See, if you could give me the contract, we'd be glad about that.
I will send you that contract.
We we have fiber to a number of towers, you know, in the in Los Angeles County down here. Again, that's that's something we can do. What's nice, we do have the option. Once we finish this Highway twelve bill, there's some towers up there that have no fiber to them. So everything is a radio backhaul, which limits their capacities. There's still some cost to bill to them, but my guess is over time, over the next few years, one of the tower owner, not either tower owner or one of the cell companies will foot the bill to get up there and get to that tower. And that's going to improve cell service up that direction.
Very good.
I have one question, John. A company named ReSound was supposed to be contacting you folks back about this time last year. They were using, I think it was called Rural Development Opportunity Funds to try and do you know anything? I've talked with them, but I can't get an answer out of them. Just talking about your person forward with your project has to take broadband into the north of the Branson and west of the Kim area.
Yes. So we have not, they have not reached out to us. They reached out to us early on after they were finalized and received that funding announcement. They do have specific milestones they have to hit. I don't know where they are exactly. I I know they're working, they've done a lot up north. To hit their numbers, that's probably the easiest for them to do that because there's a higher concentration of people up where they got funded up there. But again, they they have a certain timeline. Each each year, there's a milestone they have to have a certain percentage complete. They have not reached out to us directly. They did, under the BEAT grant, get, they are building fiber to Campbell and some surrounding community homes out in that area. We do know about. Again, we appreciate you guys sending that letter of support. We are so thankful for that and appreciate your support of everything that we've done here. I feel bad that we couldn't apply for that grant, but literally we were ready to go. And two days before, we found out it's like, oh, we can't get the materials. I think there's been a lot of prepurchasing on these BEAT grants. People have committed. And so, you know, it basically, they've committed to the manufacturers that, you know, once this grant goes through, we'll send you the purchase order and it's a contingent purchase order. So materials are going to get really long lead times here. I think over the next twelve to twenty four months.
Commissioner, what's next?
I just want to clarify, if they are the ARPA funds, they're supposed to be all bid by December twenty four and then you have until June twenty five to submit the report. If that's what it was, I just wanted to clarify that. You might want to check into that.
Okay, I'll I'll check. I know the state has worked with with whomever they're getting, with Treasury on all of that. And I know that they, I talked to the broadband office at a event called Mount Connect. I talked to Brandy. I know they were working with Treasury to make sure that they could run that final round. And so evidently, they've gotten approval from Treasury to do that. So I think as long as they can have those funds all expended by the thirty first or whatever of next year, they're good to go.
So I believe finally, I recall already that the states had an agreement directly with Treasury and they in Colorado, of course, worked out a an agreement, which we hope at the end of the day, that's putting the responsibility back on a county or a installer per se.
Right?
Yep. John, thank you so much.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it always. Always a pleasure to come down.
Likewise. Thank you. Anytime.
Bye. Thank you.
Going to go to the next presentation. It is, well, a pleasure to introduce two young ladies that are joining us. Judy Walden and Deborah Malone from City Highway of Legends. Please come up. Judy, did you travel all the way from Minnesota?
I did.
Oh, my goodness.
Just to see.
That's thank you for doing that. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you. Thank you for having us. I'm a short notice.
I stand together.
Yes, they do.
I love.
I think you want to go first.
Okay. Well, this is, it's my pleasure to provide an interim board. And when I say interim, this project is due to be finished in February. So we're in high year. And basically, the project is wayfinding on City Highway of Legends. Deborah Malone is the director, who has had a lot of direct to do on this project.
I heard so.
And you, as commissioners of this county and whatever, right, and the work members, which may have been have provided the match for the CDOT grant that is funded this. So it's been actually really good to have CDOT as the founder and partner because you know the loops you have to go through to fit all the requirements of CDOT. We've got somebody on the inside who has really made this robust movement. So we have high hopes. We'll have everything ready, all the tolerances, as well as the design phase should be finished in February. We don't yet know when the construction phase will will take place. And CDOT may do the actual installation themselves as opposed to having a contract. So here it is. So of the, I won't report on the entire project. I think we'll just talk about the six new installations that are going in in this county. So that's, it's impressive. First of all, I would give you the background that we came through you when the city highway was going for national designation. And the thing that that made this highway qualify was world class geology. So in terms of wayfinding, we're doing two things. To meet that requirement and that knowledge, every one of these installations, total installations, will have geology and the grandeur of their geology at the center. That you won't rely on that doesn't talk about the geology right there, right? This is sort of
Judy, on that, you and I have been in conversations for years now about the KT boundary. I mean, it is such an impressive thing and also reaching out to some of the northern universities to perhaps partner and be participants with the project and and provide kind of the foundation of that KT boundary geological perspective way back then. Where where is that? Do you have an update on that?
Right. So the first update is that we needed a consultant that we could trust to say, if we say this about, there's so much written, you know, who do we choose? So we chose a professor at the University of Colorado Geology Department, right? Who wrote, he's written many books, but ten years ago, he wrote a book about the geology that can throughout Colorado. So we gave him the task of looking at our our twelve sites and said, give us a story about twelve stories at each site so that people can start realizing that this is not one story, right? This is a story of erosion, volcanic activity. So how, you know, so the more the more people locally look at these signs, the more they'll learn. So one of the real exciting things is that we want to educate the populace, school kids for sure, let everybody. So once we get that in order, know that we've got eyes on it that have said this is correct, then we'll start pulling in all the other people we can and and build on that university capability. So the local capability, it's everything, right? If if this in and it's not fitted continually by activity, I don't think it advantage of what the possibilities are. So that's where we are at. Okay. So two, two things. One's the geology. Second, second is tourism as economic development. If you look at transit tourism all over the US, the biggest driving force is outdoor recreation. It doesn't matter if you're young, you're old, you're very active, you're very old making it, right? Everybody wants outdoor recreation, right? Outdoor recreation. So that's the second theme on each of these kiosks that we major, geology and outdoor recreation. So we're in the process right now, making sure that we've got all the trails that exist in these two counties and eighty two miles along the Byway and throughout things of the region, not just next to the Byway, throughout the region. So when you drive from the gateways at each end and come, whether you just go to one place and you go to six places, right? There's a map that says in two miles, there are three trail trails, right? And another ten miles, there are two lakes you can fish here, you can do this here, and it outlines specifically what is the recreation here. Not a general, you know, piece of information that says, right, Los Angeles County, a great place to recreate. It'll say, here's where you can fish, here's where you can hike, here's where you can paddle, here's where you can, et cetera. So we're working with two organizations. Why don't you talk about the two recreational organizations?
We just yesterday, we we met with the Fisher Peaches, is that what they call themselves? But you all know them from your Spock business as well, but Miss Green, yeah. Ginger Green and Ken, who was a new person for us, excellent man. He sits on the tourist He sits on the tourist board for Los Angeles. Can you remember, because last night it was a very...
His name is Joe.
Joe, yeah. His name is Joe. He has a bike shop in Trinidad, Khoranach, Tarantula. He was, comes from a marketing background, new to the area. And he's really spearheading a lot of the work with the Fisher Peak Trails people. And he already supplied me this morning, we had published. They have been working very much on the same thing because of the Spock business. You know, they're looking to do a new guide virtually, online and in print perhaps. And of course, we're part of that as well. And we're sitting every day thinking, "Looking very good for us, but we haven't got it yet." Anyway, they are providing us with the material for your end of the byway, what's going to happen and where the trails will be. And then, of course, Vida Trails has a very great guide already together. And she has said, "We can use anything of hers that we have." And the whole idea here is whatever it is that you're looking for when you travel the byway, our job is to move you on to the next spot. It's a visitor wayfinding system. So, they're not going to just spend one day or maybe just drive through, hopefully. They'll have something to eat. They'll take a little hike. They'll say, "Oh, this is so nice, why don't you stay the night?" And, you know, get up in the morning, do it again, because it's just so lovely. And they'll tell other friends and they'll come back every year. So, that's how the economic development part works. And this is very exciting. The byways have always kind of been for people who like to drive CD thrives and know about history. That's kind of changing. We used to put a lot of history on our kiosks, but now it's, we've got to tell them where they can recreate, they've got to get out. It's so needed. Those people, they don't have yards anymore. They need the fresh air. They need that opportunity to play outside. So, we are going to tell them how they can, because it's here for them. And it's kind of our secret. And we don't like giving it up, but we are going to. We'll protect it and we'll tell them how well they can protect it as well.
So, as we come down the purgatory river, right? I was working on this just before I came here. We're using international symbols for lodging, food, right? And different kinds of recreation, right? So, when you get to Stone Wall, what can you do there? Ha! We've got a restaurant side, right? And also lodging. So, as they come off the highways in either direction, the National Highway, it's not just, "I wonder what we can do." It says on the kiosk. Now, this is federal money, so it doesn't say, "Go to Joe's Gas Station." But there's an international symbol for fuel, right? And for electric charging stations and for everything. So, we're trying to get the specifics of, "Maybe we should come back here someday, right? This place seems nice, it's like, I'm hungry. Let's look at the next place, do they have restaurants in that town?" So, it's a big, it's a big new approach, tourism, which is to not just talk in general features about, "Look at the geology, we've got great recreation," but to answer what's inside each of us. What can I do here? Where can I play?
Judy, you mentioned that you want to put on a high gear. I don't think any one of the two of you knows how to put on any less than a high gear for... And by the way, Commissioners, I'm on the board of Sinne Highway of Legends. And anytime I go to these meetings, it's buckle up, we're going places. So, thank you for the work that you do. And I know you had a kind of a perspective a long time ago, Judy Caminos de... You and I were talking about this trail in Spain, like in the days.
Yeah.
El Camino.
Yes. And so, a lot of the international hikers and visitors from the United States look for this type of outdoor activity. And Los Angeles County, that part of the state, on that part of the county, provides one of the most amazing things. If you come to Los Angeles County, you can go to the eastern part of the county and have 5,000, 6,000 feet of altitude. But if you make your way to the west harbor, we have to show, then now you're talking over 10,000 feet of altitude, which creates this excitement for any visitor. So, I simply thank you for the work that you're doing. And I cannot hardly wait to see who ones have designed an installation. So, is that going to take place by the end? The installation of the wayfinding, or is it by the end of 2026?
Yes. Yes. I'm not going to let it sit on the shelf, because, you know, I want it done. I don't want to be there to do it. So, I'm kind of hoping it happens by the end. But it is, it's another step, another grant, another, you know, thing. But visually, for you that don't know what we're talking about, it's not signage, it's not commercial, it's kiosk. And they are...
And you have 52 by...
52 by...
60 what? 52 by 58.
And there's three of them, side by side, when she says, you know, recreation, geology, and then the big map where you are here and look at all these things you've got going on all over the byway, all in one place.
It's terrible. We have installed at the Coke Dale.
Coke Dale. And North Lake.
Yes.
Has three, yeah. So, it'll be same, we're matching it. It's a system, it should look alike. And it actually matches what's going on in southeast Colorado, all over the place, from the corner of the hill and...
So, specifically, what are your seats?
El Moro. Okay, that's going to be a top map, molten on stone. And it'll show the elevations, which are impressive. And then the byway running all length with the byway communities. A little more like an art piece than a hell piece. So, it'll be inside, El Moro, because there's no... So, we're excited about that. Then the State Park, the PT Boundary, right? We're so working the State Park, but again, why don't you put it in the park? Maybe that's where they go. But we'll give you other options in terms of getting it the most visible place. Coke Dale, basically, we're improving the accessibility to the ones that were already installed there. Stone Wall is just one sign that's all we can get right away. We can put in a fresh line and it'll be replaced. Monument Lake, there's never, we've never had any signage there. And as you come in, you go right to the little hut, you know, in the entrance. Then you drive down Mount Lake and back up. At the bottom of that dip, three kiosks. Talk about Monument Lake and what you can do for recreation in that region. And that'll be covering not only Monument Lake, Stone Wall, right? And going the other direction, we charted. Monument Lake, North Lake, and that's it. And North Lake is a really good story. I've been looking off, the world human kill. And he says for years, he sat in his back of his head, three panels that talk about the watershed. He said, "I want this on this panel, this on that." So, I came back and said, "Well, here, I'll put it on the back of that North Lake kiosk that exists." He says, "Well, okay, I think I'm ready, but I've got these kids that are in the ecological club, right? And he said, "I want to work with them." And I said, "Well, let's go for it." So, now he hits phone calls from everybody saying, "You're ready? We got to get ready, we got to be finished by February." But we hope we have some students involved in there, which would be very exciting as well.
Heaven forbid that somebody does an over one or there is a teenage kid that recording him and maybe a little graffiti on him or something. Is responsibility is a...
Yeah.
Okay. Of the 63 that were originally panels that were done eight to, what, 18 years, 16, 17 years ago, across the southeast, we have had no trouble, except for one exception. And that one was up at Motown. Yes, it was a visitor's sale. And it was so bad, CDOT just went, gone, no more.
There's one out here on 350 where there was not a kiosk, but a panel there. And they tore all three of those down. I think in an attempt to steal the ground, it was made up highlighting the Asanafe Trail.
Oh, God. So, yeah, that's probably...
Let you jump in on it.
I'm an MROU.
Yeah.
So, you'll be getting, every one of these total places that has location, we'll be getting an MROU. Before we get to actually produce it, you'll sign an MROU that says, "CDOT produced these signs, we now own them. And we will be responsible for taking care of that in the future." And the project, we're giving you the artwork, right? So, if you need, just reprint it.
And who's with?
So, it depends. So, I would say, oh, there are different partners.
I need to influence different.
So, we did this on the last two phases as well. You basically say that you're receiving it, right? It won't be CDOT's anymore, it'll be yours. So, the business of sustaining signage is serious. Make the investment in doing it and then, you know, there is danger, of course. So, I don't think it'll be a signature unless one of the six people that we've talked about here, one of these communities says, "We'd like it, but we can't pay for it."
Yeah, I think, you know, this is the conversation.
And we'll come to you and say, "What do you want to do?"
What are the consequences if you don't?
If you don't?
If you don't, we shatter.
Well, like, I guess at Motown, it was so bad, the loser, yeah. And again, of the time and energy and money that goes into each one, frankly, the actual kiosk itself is, once it's there, you know, that according to CDOT, is still there.
Yeah. You know, we have had a conversation just for public knowledge and record. As I have mentioned previously, that is CDOT right away, which by the way, a county, a county cannot have any jurisdiction. And that's what I have actually said. I have to, we have to research case law. And that has been kind of my perspective is, as a county, we're going to support this project 100%, right? But as the elected official, do we have the authority to say, "We are now claiming that right away"? It becomes crazy for the courts to decide in the event of it then. Well, he said, so we will look forward to the conversation. But I think at this point in time, you know, it is going to be the partners that we continue to work with to have the execution of those MOUs.
Yeah. And again, the panels, the frames are rough sawn cedar, which go into the ground, of course. And they don't rot very quickly in this weather. So, that's going to last the longest, probably. It's the frame itself. It's hard to do graffiti on rough sawn cedar. And the panels themselves, I'm not going to say it's, you say, they're just popping in and out. Well, it's not quite like that, but a few screws here and there, it comes out. The printer can reprint, again, a small fraction of what, you know, the whole thing costs. So, and it's just not been a problem, because again, we're teaching protection and preservation and leave no trace. I mean, that's what we're doing. So, that's our educational work as well.
So, the Council of Doran, I can ask CDOT if they have a statement that they can share with you about how they work on this byway. But they released, they've released it to COG. And then COG has gone to the byways. So, basically, the byways now is here. And the byways will be asking the communities to make the MOU between the byways. So, this is different than what was last time around. Last time around, we made it with the counties and municipalities.
And for the one that we did up at 160 and 540 and to Vida, the responsibility has pretty much been rolling down to so people, you know, can get out and get up close. And it looks good. That's over the last eight years? That's the data. Meanwhile, the picnic tables are falling apart, but we didn't ask them to keep that up, so.
No, this is a great initiative. So, you know, for the two of you, just know that you have this low res open. You're welcome at any time. I appreciate you, Mr. Doric. And any questions that you may have about...
For the most.
Send us an email to keep us updated. And as we go through the process of the MOU, obviously, now it might take me to have you as someone with a little mind to review languages. Which is going to be exactly the expectation we need today.
Sure, sure. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Judy. Judy, great to see you. Same troubles. Keep going back.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, before the snow.
Oh, okay. Very good. Well, that was very good. I want to now go to the next item, public comments. Anyone, we don't already sign up here. Anyone online that wishes to address this for county commissioners, please raise your hand or simply unmute yourself. You will have three minutes on the public comment. Here and now, I'm going to go to various, we don't have any items on section eight. We can go to section nine. 98, Consideration Resolution 25-033, Adapting a Supplemental Budget for General Fund and Airport Fund for Fiscal Year 2025. And on this one, Finance Director, probably. Good morning, how are you?
Good morning. So, the plan is the 2025 supplemental budget. And it is on the mini general fund at airport. We do see additional funding from the new sales tax. And we're going to transfer the $8,000 to our airport fund for that. And then I did a construction of the airport fund on the expenditure side. And that's up. I think Phil will need to read the resolution for the adoption and the appropriations. That action has been announced already from there. Of what, about 2025 is changing.
Yeah, thank you so much. Commissioner, any questions for Finance Director, probably? Here and now, Mr. Doric, would you please read the resolution?
Resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Los Angeles County, Colorado, qualifying revenue expenditures and adopting a supplemental budget for General Fund and Airport Fund for Fiscal Year 2025. Resolution number 25-033. Whereas Board of County Commissioners adopted the budget for fiscal year 2025 on December 17, 2024. Saying for the anticipated revenues expenditures for each fund and provided for the operation of all departments and functions of county government fiscal year 2025. And whereas Los Angeles County has realized certain revenues expenditures during the course of the fiscal year 2025 that were unanticipated at the time of the adoption of the budget 2025 affecting the General Fund and Airport Fund. And whereas the General Fund within the 2025 budget requires an adjustment to account for unanticipated revenues and expenditures associated with sales tax revenue. The Barry Stokes Airport Fund requires an adjustment to account for the transferred funds from the General Fund for unanticipated revenues and expenditures associated with the airport projects. Adjustments reflected in the budget for fiscal year 2025 on previously anticipated or unnecessary to remain in balances required by CRAS 29-06. Therefore, he resolved the Board of County Commissioners of Los Angeles County, Colorado, one supplemental budget for 2025 adjusting the General Fund and Airport Fund as submitted, amended and summarized. It's hereby approved and adopted as a fiscal supplemental budget for Los Angeles County for the calendar year 2025. Two, the budget for the General Fund and Airport Fund for 2025 is hereby amended as follows. General Fund, original budget, $11,237,340. Amended budget, $11,617,340. Airport Fund, original budget, $569,545. Amended budget, $994,545. The change reflects an increase in anticipated funding plus a change in appropriated credit reserves to the budget for 2025. Three, supplemental budget for the General Fund and Airport Fund for 2025 is hereby approved and adopted. Shall be signed by the Board of County Commissioners. Be part of the public records of Los Angeles County, Colorado. Four, the Director of Finance and Budget Officer is hereby directed to provide a copy of the 2025 supplemental budget to each elected official in the Department of Los Angeles County. On motion made to second affirmative vote, this resolution is adopted to safety date November 2025. On word of the Board of County Commissioners of Los Angeles County, Colorado, followed by your signature.
Thank you, Mr. Doric. Commissioners, any questions? Here and now, I will entertain motion.
I'm going to approve Resolution 25-033, Adapting a Supplemental Budget for General Fund and Airport Fund for Fiscal Year 2025. for general fund and airport fund for fiscal year twenty twenty-five. Second motion.
Commissioner has? Yes. Mr. Serf? Yes. Commissioner Lopez?
Yes. Thank you. A consideration of resolution twenty-five dash zero three for appropriating sums of money to trade expenses for supplemental budget year two thousand and twenty-five. Any comments, finance director, probably?
No.
Mr. Doricamp, please read that resolution.
Resolution, Board of County Commissioners of Los Angeles County, Colorado, incorporating sums of money to trade expenses for supplemental budget year, supplemental budget year twenty twenty-five. Resolution number twenty-five dash zero thirty-four. Whereas Board of County Commissioners adopted supplemental budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-five in accordance with state budget law and whereas provisions have been made in said twenty twenty-five fiscal budget, identifying anticipated revenues and amounts equal to or greater than the sums proposed for expenditure and set out as said in twenty twenty-five fiscal budget and whereas it is necessary that sums of money be appropriated from the anticipated revenues for each fund provided for in said twenty twenty-five fiscal budget to offset anticipated expenditures of such funds and spending agencies, print, as that term is defined in C R S twenty-nine dash one dash one zero two, print. Within such funds during fiscal year twenty twenty-five, and whereas such appropriations shall establish limits on expenditures for each fund and for each spending agency within the fund in which should carry out the operation of Los Angeles County in fiscal year twenty twenty-five, now therefore be resolved by Board of County Commissioners of Los Angeles County, Colorado. This resolution shall be known as appropriations resolution for fiscal year twenty twenty-five and hereby sets out the spending limitations for various funds of Los Angeles County for spending agencies such, within such funds and the amounts and purposes set forth through fiscal year twenty twenty-five. County general fund, county commissioners, seventeen million, seven hundred fifty-six thousand, one hundred sixty-three dollars. Threat report, six hundred twenty-one thousand, four hundred ninety-nine dollars. Treasure, uh, E T, three hundred eighty-seven thousand, five hundred thirty-three dollars. Sister, five hundred sixty-six thousand, six hundred twenty-seven dollars. Share, three million, two hundred twenty thousand, seven fifty-eight dollars. Core, one hundred ninety-eight thousand, seven hundred fifty-five dollars. Total county general fund, twenty-two million, seven hundred fifty-one thousand, three hundred thirty-five dollars. Waterbridge fund, nine million, nine hundred ninety-five thousand, nine dollars. Airport fund, nine hundred ninety-four thousand, five hundred forty-five dollars. Continency, one million, nine hundred thirty-one thousand, one hundred ninety-eight dollars. Capital expenditure, four million, six hundred twenty-five thousand, six hundred sixty-nine dollars. Conservation Trust, print and moderate grant fund, five hundred seventy-two thousand, eighty-two dollars. Payment of taxes, bill fund, two million, five hundred sixty-eight thousand, two hundred eighty-two dollars. Law enforcement system, D Y fund, eight thousand, nine hundred seventy-eight dollars. Jail bond fund, sixty-seven thousand, three hundred twenty-seven dollars. Justice Center Jail group fund, four hundred fourteen thousand, three hundred six dollars. Human services, print and public welfare grant fund, seventeen million, three hundred ninety-seven thousand, thirty-eight dollars. Total of all appropriations, sixty-one million, three hundred twenty-five thousand, seven hundred sixty-nine dollars. On motion made to second, affirming vote, this resolution was adopted safety date November twenty twenty-five. Awarded Board of County Commissioners of Los Angeles County, Colorado, followed by your signature.
Thank you, Mr. Doricamp. Commissioners, any discussion? Here and now, I will entertain the motion.
Move to approve resolution twenty-five zero three-four, for bringing some amount to trade expenses for supplemental budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-five.
Second? Commissioner Serf? Yes. Commissioner Lopez?
Yes. Ninety-eight, consideration of O B C C, seven zero four five to Black Bell Energy, L O C, two thousand sixty-eight and twenty-one cents. Did I, oh, I, I'm okay. Commissioners, any questions on this? Here and now, I will entertain the motion.
I move to approve O B C C, seven zero four five to Black Bell Energy, now L O C for two thousand sixty-eight dollar and twenty-one cents.
Second? Commissioner has? Yes. Commissioner Serf? Yes. Commissioner Lopez?
Yes. Ninety-eight, consideration of venture grant agreement. Mr. Doricamp?
Commissioners, we, Los Angeles County submitted a grant to the Venture Foundation and was awarded seven thousand five hundred dollars for county-wide study of public communication that we'll be collaborating on with the merchant campus to carry out this study. And so I ask for more to approve this.
Thank you. And I thank you, Finance Director, probably, for doing all the reports in this particular grant. Appreciate that. Commissioners, any discussion on this? Here and now, I will entertain the motion.
Move to approve the venture grant agreement.
Second? Commissioner Serf? Yes. Commissioner has? Yes. Commissioner Lopez?
Yes. Move to ninety-eight, consideration of the million. Change order zero zero eight for seven thousand four hundred and thirty-six. Mr. Doricamp?
Commissioners, the board approved this change order at your current meeting, but I was asked at the time if the amount for that change order is one thousand three hundred five dollars. I said yes. I was in here when I said that. So I brought this in front of the board to get the correct amount on the record in that amount for that change order, is seven thousand four hundred thirty-six dollars.
Thank you, sir. And I think the one thousand three hundred five is a figure that was highlighted in a higher font and really so nonetheless. Thank you for the clarification. And, Commissioners, any other questions for Mr. Doricamp? Here and now, I will entertain the motion.
I move to approve the million, C O zero zero eight for seven thousand four hundred and thirty-six. Knowledge? Second motion.
Commissioner has? Yes. Commissioner Serf? Yes. Commissioner Lopez?
Yes. Thank you. Move down to ninety-eight, consideration of diesel fuel bid. Mr. Doricamp?
Commissioners, we solicited bids for the delivery of water safety under gallons of diesel to our field farm, the fairgrounds with the foggy salts. Hana Valley Oil, two point six eight dollars per gallon, state price nineteen thousand, two hundred ninety-six dollars. World Field Services, two point eight four, two point eight one four dollars per gallon, state price twenty thousand, two hundred sixty dollars, eighty cents. Acorn Petroleum, no bid. Wasland, no bid. I ask for more to approve. Hana Valley's bid, two point six eight dollars per gallon, state price nineteen thousand, two hundred ninety-six dollars.
Any questions, Commissioners? I will entertain the motion.
Move to approve the diesel fuel bid being awarded to Hana Valley Oil at two dollars and sixty-eight cents a gallon for October nineteen thousand, two hundred ninety-six dollars.
Second? Commissioner Serf? Yes. Commissioner has? Yes. Commissioner Lopez?
Yes. Thank you. Item ninety-nine, consideration of twenty-five C zero zero one eighty-eight market change order number four, time extension. Mr. Doricamp?
Commissioner, before you forward your consideration is twenty-five dash C zero zero one eighty-eight change order number four for a time extension. The contractor, East Garage Door, requested this extension. And frankly, I have no partner with it. Our grant, I don't believe, is due until the first part of twenty twenty-seven. And the extension will be from three thirty P M October thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, to three thirty P M May twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-six. They requested this extension prior to their deadline, October thirty-one. So I ask for more about to oppose the penalty, which is allowed via documents.
Thank you, Mr. Doricamp. As long as the process and the time was adhered to. Commissioners, any questions? Commissioners, any questions on this particular item?
I don't think that, as we pointed out, that under the owner address, it has the name of it, which is Waterbridge. I don't believe there's an issue with that, just with that.
Thank you. Thank you.
Because I thought it might have been the grant out there, but it's something of eighty-eight in the part.
Yes, okay. Very good. So Commissioners, as we enter into this motion, if it is the wish of the board to approve that, please clarify that correction on the assets. So I will entertain the motion.
I move to approve twenty-five dash C zero zero one eighty-eight parking change order number four, time extension with a correction of the address that's on the document. Second motion.
Commissioner has? Yes. Commissioner Serf? Yes. Commissioner Lopez?
Yes. Ninety-eight, consideration of twenty-five C zero zero one eighty-eight parking change order number five. Corr house. Back to you, Mr. Doricamp.
Commissioners, I see the same error. I apologize. I did not catch the error in the address on this change order either. But this change order is for the removal and replacement of the ramp that is adjacent to where the services are walk-through door from the courtyard into the courthouse. The ramp is out of appliance. It's lit between ramp and the stone that goes into the courthouse. Also, the ramps slope is greater than the two percent that has to be, is the maximum amount of sidewalk or ramp in this case to be at. And so I ask for more to approve this change order for fourteen thousand, fifty dollars to remove, replace that. And I included it on one of the pictures that I had, that myself and this contractor worked out earlier, but the picture did not transfer over to the actual change order for that. Change order that, change order numbers number two was for the ramp on the backside of the D H S building. The reason why I had pulled that off, this piece, was because we did not know what that change order in addition to the change order up front for the D H S was going to come in at. And it came in low enough that we could go ahead and do this work now and still end up with a balance in there, over seventeen thousand dollars. So that's the point to approve this change order.
Thank you. Finance Director, any comments?
I'm just going to make sure, because we bunched it two hundred eighty-four thousand, but that's also including, and then we have another two hundred eighty-four for the zero statement. But I see that this is three hundred seventy-seven.
You have two eighty-four, you have two eighty-four twice.
Right, because I'm saying, is this, is this three seventy-seven including the zero statement? Or this is just the eighty-eight parking?
Eighty. So the finances?
I'm super guessing, because right now, the design, right now, is only a tap into the zero statement, so there's additional funding there.
Give me just a second. I'll pull it to scripture. The address changed, so I can figure about it.
And with the forecast at seventeen thousand dollars remaining on that budget, then, of course, the next item, my question was going to be, is that to replace? Would that be a have to replace the sidewalk going that is to?
What, you know, that also, because the function to verify, because you're also verifying there's a couple of bump outs and bump, or there, excuse me, a, like, um...
The road?
A curve on the backside where the trash cans are right now, because when they grab the trash cans, they give the trash service provider, it's not uncommon for them to bank. Trash cans up against the wall, still wanted D H S and the soy churro. It's not a huge issue right now, but we ran the money to create that curve there so that the tires of the trash receptacles will walk the curb, and then the trash receptacles themselves won't hit the building. And the seventeen thousand, three hundred and fifty-five dollar balance, that does include the zero statement. Zero statement, maximum price was one hundred sixty thousand, ninety-four dollars. Total project funds are five hundred sixty-eight thousand. So I want to run the numbers. The three hundred sixty?
Yes.
I need to screen over it.
So the three, so the new three, the three seventy-seven is including zero statement? So there's additional funding, though. Doctor, you're saying that there's additional funding?
So the five hundred and seven thousand dollars is inclusive, that would be sufficient to cover the zero statement last of the project?
Yeah.
All right. Commissioners, any additional questions on this item? And the same motion is going to be required if it is the board's recommendation to approve with the address change.
Move to approve twenty-five C zero zero one eighty-eight parking change order number five. Corr house with that address correction.
Second? Commissioner Serf? Yes. Commissioner has? Yes. Commissioner Lopez?
Yes. I will see, right? Financial matters, section ten, consideration of labels and bill for the first half of November two thousand and twenty-five. Finance Director, probably?
Payroll as of November fifteen, twenty twenty-five is two hundred fifty-five thousand, six eighty-five, twenty cents. Do you have any questions on payroll? Then what is this paper on? November twelve, it's three hundred thirty-eight thousand, forty-eight dollars, and eighty cents. And within this packet, we have made a million for the Corr House drain wiring project for one hundred ninety-three thousand, three eighty-one, four cents. The C W P P grant, we have made four thousand, three fifty-two for hanging where in the, running the grant. Now, let's see. This one here is service plus electrical. This is Waterbridge and the airport. So it's a septic tank that is being done at the airport and the Hone shop for fifteen thousand, four seventy. And then the consultants, when the C W P P plan, their first check is five thousand, five hundred twenty. Anything that I might have missed, any question on?
No, thank you for thorough report. Any questions, Commissioners, for Finance Director, probably? Here and now, I will entertain the motion.
I move to approve labels and bills for the first half of November twenty-five. Second motion.
Commissioner has? Yes. Commissioner Serf? Yes. Commissioner Lopez?
Yes. And we're going to go to section eleven. At this time, the board will suspend this regular meeting. The Board of County Commissioners will be suspended via motion and enter into executive session for the county attorney for purposes of receiving legal advice on specific legal questions. Item A, food fund. B, county government office hours. C, property tax. D, underfunded U F F F. E, contract. And F, E M. Commissioners, I will entertain the motion to suspend this meeting and enter into executive session.
So, one second?
Commissioner Serf? Yes. Commissioner has?
And my oversight, yes, thank you, Mr. Doricamp. Let go ahead. And there is another C R S, twenty-four six four two four E, determining position relative to matters that may be subject to negotiation, the document strategy for negotiations, and instructing negotiators. My sincere apologies for that, so that's going to be part of the same motion. And other that we have, item A, contract. I will entertain the motion at this time now.
So, starting the motion.
Commissioner has? Yes. Commissioner Serf? Yes. Commissioner Lopez?
Yes. Short business.